One, two. Are we good? All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Everybody's got the summary report on agenda items for this special meeting at 5:00. I need a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Motion to second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Moving right on to agenda item number two, finance. Mr. Curtis.
All right, thank you, Mr. Prescott. The first item I'm gonna go over is the capital outlay budget. I think you have that before you. This is the leak-thick one. Take a look at that right quick. Put them?
There you go.
Come on, okay. I did list on the agenda that it was the second draft, when in fact, it's no different from the first draft. I guess it's a second look at it. There were, after our first meeting, a couple of weeks ago, there were no changes made to the proposed capital outlay budget. So, the amount stands. And if there's any items that y'all have, that you need, want to have some conversation about, we can certainly do that. I will point out in the, on page, if you'll turn over to page six. This shows the revenue, and it does show the amount of money that we would be requesting from the Pamlico County Commissioners. It's $444,945. This year, we received $400,000, so that would be an increase of $44,945. This year, we actually put in $93,364 in fund balance. I decreased that to $50,000, but obviously, if we need to, depending on the funding from the county, if we need to bump that up a little bit, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. So, as the capital outlay budget stands right now, that's where we're at, $494,945. Were there any items in particular, or line items, that anybody had any questions about on this budget? And just a reminder, Mr. McCarter, do you have a question?
No.
Just a reminder, this is our second meeting. We do have a third one scheduled for the 24th, three weeks from tonight. The board does have the option to approve the proposed budgets tonight, if you, you know, if they're, all the questions are answered, or we can have a third meeting. And then, we actually will formally present the budget to the county commissioners on May the 15th. We are on their agenda for their meeting on the 15th of May, to make that formal presentation. What we'll probably do, as we've done in the past, is at whatever point in time our board approves this proposed budget, we'll go ahead and get these numbers to the commissioners, so they can plug them in and start doing some calculations. The sooner they get these numbers, the better, so they can go ahead and start looking at the total county budget.
That seems to be favorable to them, the sooner they get it, and can start looking at our budget compared to the other county agencies. That's very helpful, so keep that in mind.
Okay, so that...
So, are there any, if there's any questions on capital outlay, let's make sure we, while that's on our mind, if there are questions or things that, or if it's the pleasure of the board, we can approve the capital outlay budget as presented tonight, and not have to discuss this one at a possible third meeting.
We've got them both together, so we could just do them at the same time.
Okay, all right. So, be thinking about that, as I'll let you move on to local current expense.
Yeah, and once, once these budgets are approved, and then, when we find out what we'll be receiving from the county, and if it, if it doesn't totally fund our budget, then we'll come back and look at our budgets, and make whatever reductions we need to make in order to make the funding match from the county.
Yep.
All right, so, let's talk about current expense. I did mention at the last meeting that if you had any questions, you could email them to me, and then I would get the answers, and, excuse me, present them at this meeting here. I did have some questions, and I've gone through and answered them, so I've got a handout I'd like to hand to you, and we'll take it. Okay, so, all these questions are for the local current expense fund, and what I've done is I've listed basically the question, where there's a, there's an expense code and a description, and then, if you'll pull out your local current expense budget, and if you'll turn to the page that it references, the first one is page three, which is actually the first page of the line item budget. And it's actually the very first item, it's the salary teachers, where it shows this year's budget, $35,920, and a proposed of $38,000 for next year. And the question is, which teachers does this line item pay for? And my response to that is, this line item is for only one teacher, and this would be a beginning teacher, or a teacher with only one or two years' experience. The majority of our teachers are paid from state funds first, and then federal funds. Our local budget has typically paid for no more than one or two teachers. So, we always pay the least expensive ones from local funds. So, anytime we have beginning teachers coming in with no experience, typically, that's who we'll plug in here and put in the local budget. It's not necessarily the same teacher every year, okay? And if you need an explanation, yes, Eric.
So, Steve, is that, the increase in that, is that gonna be reflective of the proposed increase that the state's talking about?
Well, right now, we've got a proposed budget from the governor, and the House has got one that has come out. They're both pretty aggressive, to be honest with you. You know, I think both, they're close, the governor's is double-digit increase over two years, and the House is about seven and a half percent increase over two years. And then, I think the first one was four and a quarter percent. This figure's just a guesstimate, because I was working on this in January, so...
Gotcha.
We may have, I may have to adjust that a tad, up or down. Okay? All right, the second one is the, is the line item right below that, which is the local teacher supplement. And the question is, does this line item pay the local teacher supplement for all teachers in our district? And the answer is yes. All local teachers' supplements are paid from this line item. And not only does this include certified, not only is it certified teachers, but it also includes, it's basically classroom teachers, media coordinators, guidance counselors, social workers, school psychologists, school nurses, and speech therapists. Any certified instructional person, not just classroom teachers, fall under this category to receive this local supplement. When we get bonuses, which we've gotten the last couple of years, for state bonuses for teachers, that definition includes all these people, okay? So, it's not just classroom teachers, it's all these other certified people, which they call instructional support personnel, that also share in this supplement. And of course, we're looking at, we're currently at 11%, and we're requesting to go to 12%. Okay? Does that make sense? Okay, the third one is also on the first, on page three, and it's a field trips line item. And the question is, does this line item pay for the teachers on the, that are on the field trips? And this one's a little bit confusing, but if you look at that field trips line item, it's 20, this year is $21,382, next year, $22,000. And my explanation is, this line item is used to reimburse the transportation budget, which is state funds, for costs associated with the upkeep of our activity buses. Any expenses related to our activity buses, fuel, repairs, parts, mechanic's salary, and benefits, has to be reimbursed back to the transportation budget, and this is what this money is used for. Any work that's done over there at the, at the bus garage, if it's a non-yellow vehicle, is what they call it, then they can't pay for it. It's gotta come from somewhere else. So, if it's not a yellow school bus, somebody else has gotta pay for the work that's done on that. Activity buses, maintenance vehicles, school district car, we have to reimburse for that. So, the way it works, like with field trips or athletic events, the baseball team goes to Lejeune for a, for a baseball game, Lindsay at Transportation sends an invoice to the high school for a dollar a mile, okay, which is, in no way pays the total cost of an activity bus running up and down the road. All right, so, the track, the bookkeeper of the high school writes a check to the Board of Education, sends it over here to me, we receipt it, and that's actually in Fund Eight, that's actually a revenue item in Fund Eight. And then, Lindsay sends me a spreadsheet every month of all the non-yellow vehicle cost, and what they pay for, whether it's fuel, salaries and benefits for the mechanics, repair parts. So, then, we in turn, I take money out of this line item, and I reimburse the transportation budget, okay? So, it's almost like a triangle. Invoice goes to the high school, high school sends me the check, and then I reimburse the, the transportation department for these non-yellow bus vehicle items. So, no, no personnel involved, except for reimbursing transportation for, for the work that they do on any other vehicles besides yellow school buses, okay? That's probably clear as mud, but that's about this way, I know how to explain it. Any questions on that? Okay, if not, let's go to the next one, which is on page five. And the, it's the very first item at the top of that page, school salary, school clerical. And the question is, are these monies for the clerical staff in the district? This does pay for approximately one and a half positions, clerical positions, and that might be in the school. It could be a school receptionist, a bookkeeper, administrative assistant, or it could be somebody over here. And you might ask, why one and a half positions? We always use state money first, and pay that. And then, whoever's left, or however many positions are left that we can't pay out of state funds, then we pay it out of local. And that's why, basically, there's one and a half positions there. And again, depending on what we get from the state next year, that could fluctuate a little bit. So, out of all the clerical positions in the district, this pays for one and a half of those, so not much at all, okay? All right, on page two. We're still on page five of the budget, and this is the supplementary pay, virtual online administration. And the question is, is the average supplement $5,000 for all school leadership? And the response is no, all school administrator salaries, their salaries are based on the state salary schedule. Our local school administrator supplement varies from school to school, and from position to position. One of the big factors that we have to look at, our after-school duties are also taken into consideration when determining a school administrator supplement. For example, the assistant principal at the high school has a whole lot more after-school duties than an assistant principal at the primary school, or Fred Anderson. So, we have to take that into consideration. Wade Reichsneider might as well just get a bed and put it in there somewhere, 'cause he's always here, always. And it's the same thing with middle school, too. They, they just have a whole lot more active, after-hours activities that they have to, have to attend. Okay, the next one is on page six, and it's an assistant principal salary, it's the third, third line item from the top, assistant principal salary. And basically, this is, this represents a portion of one assistant principal salary, okay? And again, we get, we get, in the state budget, we get months of employment for principals. We get 12 months for every principal. So, that's four principals, 48 months of employment. And then, based on the enrollment of the school district, we get additional months for assistant principals. And the way we are right now, we get about 12 more months for assistant principals. So, we get about 60 months of employment every year for principals and assistant principals. Well, we have more than one assistant principal, so we have to pay him from other programs, and so, we would, we would take the highest-paid assistant principal and pay him from that pot of money. Because with those months of employment, it doesn't matter what they make, they pay it. The state pays it. And then, typically, we look at small county funds, and pay some out of there. This, and this is kind of what's left. This actually is not even a full salary for an assistant principal, it's about 80% of an assistant principal. So, that's what we pay out of local. Remember, we wanna, we wanna spend local money last on these type of positions, 'cause it's mainly for supplements, maintenance, maintaining the buildings, and keeping the upkeep, custodian pay. And, so that's what that is, that's 80% of one assistant principal position. Okay? Then on page 21. And the question is in reference to the second line item from the, from the top, Teacher of the Year Board Stipend. We started this year allowing our Teacher of the Year to attend, or we requested that the Teacher of the Year attend every board meeting. And there's several reasons for doing that. One is, she can be the voice, this year's Katie Hardison, she can be the voice of the teachers in the district. If teachers have a concern, or something they would like information on, they can go to Katie and talk to her, and then Katie could certainly come before the board and, and speak to y'all, and express her concerns, or praises, or whatever, you know, whatever it might be, to the board. On the other hand, if the board has questions that Katie would be in a position to answer representing the teachers in the district, then they would also do that. So, she will serve out through the, through the summer, and then, when the new Teacher of the Year is named in August, then that person will replace her, and we just basically pay a $250 stipend to that person every, every month, just for, you know, just for her time and effort of, of coming and doing that. Now, all the, when, when they do announce the Teachers of the Year, at the Welcome Back Luncheon, and they announce the Pamlico County Schools Teacher of the Year, all four of those teachers, they do get some gifts and rewards that come from the Board of Education. It's open POs, a little bit of, a little bit of money, and then outside entities also donate, the Education Foundation and a few others. So, all four of them do get prize money for that. And again, then the winner is the one that would be representing the, the teachers at the board meetings, okay?
Does that come out of this line item as well?
That is, oh, no, 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 no.
That comes out of a different?
Right. Okay.
And let's, can I just say, let's don't forget about Katie being here, too, 'cause sometimes we do, she kind of just sits in the audience. I think I'm gonna ask her to sit like, right here, maybe, so that we won't forget. 'Cause if we're talking about something, and we're wondering how teachers feel, that's why she's here. But, I mean, I, I forget, too, and she's quiet. So, anyway, just a thought.
Question while we're on page 21.
Okay.
Legal services. Twenty, I'm a little confused here. The 2022 expenditure was 85.5, and then, 2324 is 80, and then, it's showing a $5,000 increase, but...
That's, that's an increase over this year's budget amount of $75,000. See the first column?
Thank you very much.
So, even though I'm just estimating, we'll spend 85.5 this year, I'm an optimist. I think our legal fees are gonna go down next year.
Okay, I was, we're going with the estimated expenditure.
And just on a side note, the, the amount of legal fees that we've paid to Pointers Rule since going with them is significantly less than what we were paying. So, that's great. And we're still getting the great representation and service that we were used to. Okay? All right, the last question is on page 22, if you'll turn over a page. And the very top-line item for administrator's supplements, and the question is, does each member get an equal amount of, of local supplement, and how many members would fall into this category? No, they're not equal, there's, you know, it's based on your position, it's based on your job description. And one thing that we found out, if we, if we have a school administrator that comes over to the central office and takes a job, it's, it's a cut in pay, to be honest with you. Because, over the years, the state has always focused on teacher salaries, principals, and assistant principals, not central office administrators, okay? So, the only way we can keep their salary competitive and close to what they were making was with the local supplement, okay? So, they do vary. That, this pot of money probably represents about eight, sup, you know, school, central office administrators, so, and it, that probably runs about $5,500 a year, so, you know, 500 a month, or something like that, roughly, is what they're, is what it equates to on, on an average. Any questions on those? Okay, and I appreciate the questions, it was probably good for all of us to go with that, and made me do a little homework and refresh myself, so, so that was, that was good. The, and again, similar to the capital outlay budget, there's been no changes made to this to this local current expense budget since we've met in our first meeting. And so, I know y'all have had it, and we're able to have been able to review it some. If y'all have any additional questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer those. I would like you to turn back to page one, and let's just look at the, what we're looking at as far as, if we stay with this proposed budget, what it would mean as far as funding. So, if you'll turn back to page one, and you'll see up at the top there, you see a total request of, this year we got $4,320,000, and you can see how that split between us and Rappahoe Charter School. And the proposed budget for next year is a total of $4,628,799. And that's an increase of $308,799, or 7.15% increase in funding. Of that increase, $259,473 would come to us, and $49,236 would go to a Rappahoe Charter School, based on the estimates of the enrollment numbers. Just for comparison, for this year, we've got an 8% increase. We went from $4,000,000 to $4,320,000, which was a pretty generous increase in the local current expense budget. I have no idea what is in store for this year. It's kind of hard to read, and read them and know what to expect. But, I think we're, I am, anyway, I'm a firm believer in asking what we feel like we need. These are not wants, these are needs for the students and for the staff of our school district. And there's no fluff in here. And if it turns out that the governor's budget is the winner, and it's double-digit increases in raises over the next two years, then I'm gonna come back to you and ask you to appropriate more fund balance, because I won't be able to afford it. So, thankful we have that million dollars in the fund balance right now, because ultimately we'll have to use it, okay? Do y'all have any questions about it at all?
You answered my one question. The percent increase, I thought it was around 8% that they, we got a good increase last year. We didn't get everything we wanted on capital outlay, but we did on local and current expense, so...
Yeah, that rarely happens, that they totally fund either one of the, either one of the budgets.
So, Mr. Curtis, what you're saying is if the governor's proposed budget is approved, then we'll fall short of what we've proposed here?
Yes.
And so, we'll have to, because we've relied on what we think we'll get from the state, and it'll be less, okay?
And that's because of salaries increase.
Salaries increase greatly, which is a good thing, but it just means we didn't have enough here.
Okay.
But that would be a good thing on the employee side, that get the increase.
So, right now, we've got the, we have the governor's budget, the House budget just came out, the Senate is next. And once the Senate comes out with their budget, then the House and the Senate will get together committees, and they'll try to hash everything out and come up with a budget that they both agree on. And then, once they approve that, then it goes to the governor, and then he has the authority to veto it if he wants to, or sign off on it. I'm just encouraged that they're this far along in the process, because it's not very often that the state has a budget by July 1. It typically doesn't happen. So, that's encouraging. Any questions?
So, everyone has had a chance to review both budgets, and submitted questions that have been answered. So, again, we can approve this tonight, we don't have to have a third meeting. So, it's the pleasure of the board to approve both these as presented, and then we can move forward, we're getting things ready for, or get it to the commissioners earlier, because they will come back with questions and ask questions and things like that. But the sooner the better, is what we have learned from previous years.
Well, the questions that I had, it was answered, so I make the motion.
Have a motion to approve the budgets as presented.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. As always, very good job, Mr. Curtis and Ms. Jackson, and every administrators and everybody. It's a solid budget, and as you said, it's not wants, it's needs.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's everything on the agenda. Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Don't go too far.
Eat if you didn't eat.
In 29 minutes, or 28 minutes, we'll be starting again.
And Mr. Prescott, just a reminder that that will mean that we don't have to have that April 24.
April meeting.
But on that note, could I ask everyone a question?
Sure.
While we're all here? Are we still on? I'm okay if we're still on. Well, okay, we do that if we're...
Well, we're adjourned, so we can go ahead and...
Okay.
...
To comply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. All right, good evening to everyone. We've got a lot going on in Pamlico County Schools District tonight. We've got a lot of folks who normally would be here or not here. I think we've got something going on at the middle school.
There's some ballgames.
Ballgames, a lot of other activities are happening tonight. So thank you for the ones that are here. To the board, everyone's had a chance to review our minutes of the March 6, 2023, regular scheduled meeting, closed session for December 2022, January 2023, and March 2023 regularly scheduled meetings, and the minutes of the March 20, 2023, special call meeting. So I'm gonna start with our March 6 regular Board of Education meetings. If there are no changes or corrections to that, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Well, I have a question before we do that. In our minutes, it reflects, and I know we have it on the agenda for later on, the heart work situation. It has, it reflects that it was in the superintendent comments. But I was under the impression that we had discussion and voted outside of the superintendent comments. But the minutes reflect that it was superintendent comments.
There was, I don't think there was a vote. Was there a vote? I don't remember there being a vote. Just discussion in superintendent's report.
Well, I could be wrong, but I thought there was a vote prior because the discussion started before the superintendent comments, I thought.
There's nothing before the superintendent's report.
I don't think there was a vote.
Does anyone else recall that?
What was the question, Jamie?
In terms of the heart works.
Talk into the mic a little bit better, Jamie.
In terms of the heart works situation, I thought we began that discussion before we got to superintendent comments, and there was a vote that was asked for.
That's where it was on the agenda, was in the superintendent's report. And I think we ask every, y'all ask everyone's opinion. And I think we ask every, y'all ask everyone's opinion about it, so we can move forward with what our plan was. And I think we ask every, y'all ask everyone's opinion about it, so we can move forward with what our plan was. But it was in the superintendent's report. But it was in the superintendent's report.
Okay.
Rachel, is there a process, or it looks like you're looking? Rachel, is there a process, or it looks like you're looking?
I'm looking, I'm not for a process, but to see my own notes on it. I'm looking, I'm not for a process, but to see my own notes on it. But what I would say is pull the March minutes off, and we can go back and look, it's all on, you guys have them recorded, so we can confirm that. But what I would say is pull the March minutes off, and we can go back and look, it's all on, you guys have them recorded, so we can confirm that. And so I would pull the March minutes, and we can take a look at those at another meeting. And so I would pull the March minutes, and we can take a look at those at another meeting.
All right, we'll do that. All right, we'll do that. So we'll pull those, review those, and we'll bring them back up at our next meeting. So we'll pull those, review those, and we'll bring them back up at our next meeting. Everybody's had a chance to look at the closed session minutes of our December 5, 2022, January 9, March 6, 2023, Everybody's had a chance to look at the closed session minutes of our December 5, 2022, January 9, March 6, 2023, regular Board of Education meetings. regular Board of Education meetings. If there are any changes to those, we can, we'll have to make those in closed session. If there are any changes to those, we can, we'll have to make those in closed session. If there's not any changes, I entertain a motion to approve as presented. If there's not any changes, I entertain a motion to approve as presented. Motion. Motion.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second, motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Second, motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Enclosed, you'll find also the minutes from our special call Board of Education meeting on March 20. Enclosed, you'll find also the minutes from our special call Board of Education meeting on March 20. If there's no changes to that, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented. If there's no changes to that, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented. Motion. Motion. Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda? Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, sir, we do not. No, sir, we do not.
Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion. Motion.
Second, motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Second, motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, matters of the public, good news, Mr. Rice. All right, matters of the public, good news, Mr. Rice.
Good evening. Good evening. For tonight's good news, we have Rotary Students of the Month. For tonight's good news, we have Rotary Students of the Month. First, from Pamlico County Middle School, we have Aspen Nunley. First, from Pamlico County Middle School, we have Aspen Nunley. Principal Anche had this to say about Aspen. Principal Anche had this to say about Aspen. Aspen is a prime example of hard work and dedication to her schoolwork. Aspen is a prime example of hard work and dedication to her schoolwork. She is at the top of her class academically and balances all of her school activities with ease. She is at the top of her class academically and balances all of her school activities with ease. Aspen is kind and respectful to her peers and teachers while being a good role model for her classmates to follow. Aspen is kind and respectful to her peers and teachers while being a good role model for her classmates to follow. Aspen is an amazing person both inside and outside of school. Aspen is an amazing person both inside and outside of school. We are so proud of her. We are so proud of her. Congratulations, Aspen Nunley, Pamlico County Middle School's Rotary Student of the Month. Congratulations, Aspen Nunley, Pamlico County Middle School's Rotary Student of the Month.
So I'm gonna say the thing that the gentleman usually says from the Rotary, for the Rotary's serve to change lives, So I'm gonna say the thing that the gentleman usually says from the Rotary, for the Rotary's serve to change lives, Rotary International Four Way Test, of the things we think say are due, is it the truth? Rotary International Four Way Test, of the things we think say are due, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? Aspen, congratulations. Aspen, congratulations.
Next. Next. Next, from Pamlico County High School, we have Andrea Chavez Lopez. Next, from Pamlico County High School, we have Andrea Chavez Lopez. Principal Holton had this to say about Andrea. Principal Holton had this to say about Andrea. Andrea is a senior at Pamlico County High School. Andrea is a senior at Pamlico County High School. She is active member of our band and served as drum major for the 2223 marching band season, She is active member of our band and served as drum major for the 2223 marching band season, leading her fellow band members through several award-winning performances. leading her fellow band members through several award-winning performances. She maintains a 4.45 weighted GPA all while taking seven community college dual enrollment courses She maintains a 4.45 weighted GPA all while taking seven community college dual enrollment courses in addition to her two honors-level Pamlico County High School courses this semester. in addition to her two honors-level Pamlico County High School courses this semester. Andrea is not only an academic scholar, she can regularly be seen assisting her mother, Andrea is not only an academic scholar, she can regularly be seen assisting her mother, one of our outstanding custodians, with after-school events, one of our outstanding custodians, with after-school events, volunteering her time to aid in the beautification of our school. volunteering her time to aid in the beautification of our school. Ms. Chavez Lopez is polite, compassionate, hardworking, and a friend to all with whom she comes in contact. Ms. Chavez Lopez is polite, compassionate, hardworking, and a friend to all with whom she comes in contact. She has been accepted to North Carolina State University, the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, She has been accepted to North Carolina State University, the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, as well as other universities, and plans to pursue a hall degree. as well as other universities, and plans to pursue a hall degree. It is my pleasure to nominate Ms. Chavez Lopez for the April Rotary Student of the Month, It is my pleasure to nominate Ms. Chavez Lopez for the April Rotary Student of the Month, and know that no matter her future endeavors, she will find much success. and know that no matter her future endeavors, she will find much success. Congratulations, Andrea Chavez Lopez, Pamlico County High School's Rotary Student of the Month. Congratulations, Andrea Chavez Lopez, Pamlico County High School's Rotary Student of the Month. That's our good news for this evening. That's our good news for this evening.
Again, congratulations, congratulations to our two Rotary Students of the Month. Again, congratulations, congratulations to our two Rotary Students of the Month. At this time, we're gonna move to public comment. At this time, we're gonna move to public comment. We do have one person that has signed up tonight. We do have one person that has signed up tonight. I'm just gonna say Ms. Whitsett, because I don't want to mispronounce your first name. I'm just gonna say Ms. Whitsett, because I don't want to mispronounce your first name. Is she here with us? Is she here with us? Is that Bylin Whitsett? Is that Bylin Whitsett?
Balaan Whitsett. Balaan Whitsett.
Whitsett? Whitsett?
Balaan Whitsett. Balaan Whitsett.
Balaan Whitsett is, okay, she's not here, so we will move on. Balaan Whitsett is, okay, she's not here, so we will move on. At this time, I'm gonna, at the pleasure of the chair, I'm gonna call a five-minute recess. At this time, I'm gonna, at the pleasure of the chair, I'm gonna call a five-minute recess. We have one board member who is gonna be leaving to attend our commissioner's meeting, We have one board member who is gonna be leaving to attend our commissioner's meeting, so we'll do a short five-minute recess. so we'll do a short five-minute recess. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. That got everybody quiet, okay, I'm gonna call, not quiet everybody. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. Thank you all for allowing it to quick recess. We're gonna move on into our superintendent's report, Agenda Item 3.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, Item 3.1, the membership report you have in front of you, and, or it was in the handouts that you received on Thursday, Pamlico Primary School at a minus three, Fred Anderson holding steady, middle school minus one, high school plus two, for an overall of minus two, with a total of 1164 as of March 27. Next, I'd like to talk to you just a little bit. Mr. Curtis is gonna help me with another resolution, and I made sure this time you guys had this early. And this is the resolution to oppose House Bill 219, the charter school omnibus. The current law provides equal local funding for all K-12 public school students. And this, Steve, I'm gonna let you talk about this, as this is your thing, but this is very important, that we support this.
Okay, thank you. This has been discussed many times over the past 10 or 12 years, and the way it stands now is local education agencies have a fund date, which is a separate pot of money that is currently not shared with charter schools. And that was the way the law was written, and the charter schools are now trying to get their percentage of money out of that, out of that fund date. And just to give you an example of what kind of revenues flow through there, NC pre-K program, let's see, ROTC funds that come through Medicaid, administrative claims money that goes through there. And I went back and looked at last year as far as the revenues that we received to see how much the charter school would have received if this law would have been in effect last year, and we would have had to pay them an additional about $100,000. These are reimbursement grants that we're funding and then getting reimbursement from that, so it would, it would be almost impossible for us to continue our programs the way we have them running now and have to share that money for, for instance, NC pre-K, when they don't have an NC pre-K program. They could, I guess they could apply for one if they wanted to. ROTC, they don't have an ROTC program. So there's, there's sales and use tax receipts that, refunds that we receive. They get that already, they get the full state and local portion of the sales and use tax free fund. We only get the local portion, but yet they want us to share that with them, something they're already receiving. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, and I feel like we need to, this, this is a great resolution. Everything in it is, is true and accurate, and we need to do everything we can to prevent that from happening, because it would definitely be a financial detriment to our school district.
And this is something that schools across the state are, are doing, just to try to help us to be able to not have to share that, those funds.
Anybody have any questions? If it's the pleasure of the board, we can vote to approve this resolution.
And it only needs a board chair's signature, but we would need the board approval for it.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Thank you.
Second, motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Very good resolution.
All right, so now Item 3.3 is to give a quick overview of the new school project. So I'm gonna ask if Ms. Wendy White will put a couple of pictures up on the screen. And this is some PowerPoints from the last meeting we had, week before last, I believe it was, with our architects. And in the back of the room also, we have the same pictures that, that you're gonna be seeing up here. A lot of people have been asking about the design. Each time we have a meeting, and you can go to the second slide if you will. There we go. So we have, this is a two-story building, as you guys know, it will be 612. We'll move, once this happens, we'll move the middle school out of the building that, as everyone knows, it's known to flood more than once. So this will be built on the area that is the baseball field currently. And as a matter of fact, was it today, Steve, or tomorrow, today, that they started doing some, it's called boarding, I think, on the field? And the baseball coach, Sheriff Davis, who couldn't be with us tonight, is very aware and is very supportive of the work that we're doing right now. So we have, we are meeting on a regular basis now, I mean, every, every few, every two to three weeks, with the architects and the construction management people, to contractors, to kind of get some things set. It's gonna take a while, as you know, this can't happen fast, does it happen, will not happen overnight. We're looking about a year, at least a year, probably before groundbreaking. What happened was, the week before last, we met with representatives from particular departments that the architect wanted to meet with, to, to make sure that we had rooms that were large enough for specific activities, like the culinary arts room, that they had the appropriate amount of space for their equipment and things. There were some classroom situations where, you know, do we want the middle school all on the top floor and the high school on the bottom floor? Just a lot of things that we had conversations about, made some tweaks to the actual room. So now, we'll continue having these small, what he's calling department meetings, and then hopefully a meeting with the board very soon. If you wanna flip to the next one, you'll see on that one, and I'm sorry, it's kind of small, but that, the first floor was what you see now, and then the second floor, which is where we mostly classrooms, and each area will have a commons area, there's two gyms in the building. We did some tweaking to the locker rooms, once the coaches took a look at it, they didn't like how the locker rooms were laid out. So there's still a lot more of that kind of thing to be done. It's in the very, very, very infant stages, so I just wanted to kind of give you the update on really where we were right now. And if you go to the next one, and this is kind of a, there's actually three options here. But this is actually, once the, because what's, what's gonna happen is the first phase of this whole project is gonna be the baseball field moving to an area behind Fred Anderson, so that we can build on top of the baseball field. Of course, that'll be after the season's over and in the fall. And then we'll build a total of three fields, because we'll need four fields, two softball, two baseball, when everything is said and done. And that's, there were some different options there, and we're still looking at tweaking exactly how they're gonna be turned, and, and that's just some of the options that he had for us there. So, and, and it looks close, but it's not in any flood zones, so be, be aware of that, because that was the concern back there. And then if you flip to the next one, there's just a list here of kind of of the, the phases. Actually, I'll flip one more, if you will. And definitely, you can't see that. But I think the most important pieces are that right now, in the month of April, will be, the big thing is him meeting with department heads and trying to get some specifics with the principals. the big thing is him meeting with department heads and trying to get some specifics with the principals of those schools. And then bids on the ball field. If you flip over on the next one, most of that is, is just biddings and getting things like that done. Reviewing with the board, he's got dates for that. And then on the last one, actually it has, the next to the last, it, it notice to proceed May 6. So we're looking at May of '24 before this building actually will start really seeing what's happening out there. Number seven says building construction should take about 22 months. Of course, we know, you know, the best laid plans, but 22 months. So six of them in '24, all 12 in '25, and then about four months in 2026. So hopefully, the first school year in this new building will be the '26, '27 school year. So that's just a quick, quick overview. There'll be a lot of changes between now and then, but we will certainly keep you guys posted. And at the next meeting that he comes for, he'll have the new drawings, which will be the tweaks that we made. I mean, he'll keep updating our drawings, and we'll keep giving them to the schools. We actually gave the schools copies that they could cut, move things around if you think this isn't gonna work, turn a room if that'll. There's just a lot of things, and it's, and it's, it's a, it's a process. I mean, gosh, it's a, it's a big deal. But we want it to be right. We don't want to build a building that's too small once we finally get it finished. I hear that happens a lot. So we're trying to be really, really careful with this money that we were so blessed to get. So anyway, that's just the overview of what we know right now. And as I know more, I will certainly keep you guys informed. And like I said earlier today, if you guys are able on the 26th, we'd like to hopefully have a meeting soon. And it'll be an open, public meeting for anybody to come to to talk about any changes that have happened for the new school project. So next, and Mr. Gibbs did mention this. Item 3.4, the Hartworks Transportation Update. I met with Rodley and Debbie Strebling, who's the director there, gosh, a few weeks ago, just to make sure we were all on the same page. We did give them their letter. We had a letter that we said we would send to them by April 1st, which was their deadline. They had asked, I did hear that there were some questions while we were waiting until April 1st. That was actually, they asked us if we could let them know by then so they can make plans for the fall. So we did tell them that we are gonna make every effort. We're working on some things to make that happen so that we won't lose instructional time, but those kids will get transported to Hartworks so that they can continue to do the work that they do too. So everything should be rolling forward with that. And they were very pleased when they left my office. And if you've heard any different, please let me know. Maybe privately, but please let me know. All right, now, Item 3.5. I'm so excited. I have the pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Eric Griffin, who's gonna come forward. He's here in place of Sheriff Davis, who actually had a game tonight. And he's gonna introduce some very special and new people, most of them are new, to our district. So, Mr. Griffin.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us tonight. Coming up here, proud to say that we have a school resource officer in every school. The hard work from the board, the sheriff, and achieving the grant. I'd like to introduce you Sergeant Harold Wright, which everyone knows from the high school. We've got Deputy Mark Angelo, who was at Pampico Middle School. We have Deputy Gage Covington, who's at our primary school. Unfortunately, Dakota Thomas couldn't make it tonight. He is also coaching with the sheriff. So they have a game, and he's elsewhere instructing children. So he is currently at Fred Anderson, and he's enjoying it. So I'm pretty sure I can speak on his behalf. But we just wanted to thank you for everything you've done, and we're happy to have everyone in a school and all the children safe.
Well, we thank y'all. It has been such a pleasure. Last week, we got the, the fourth one. And to be able to, I mean, every time I walk into a school, I see the officer, whether it's just having lunch with the kids, which I did the other day, or helping deal with a situation, you know, negative or positive. It has just been a pleasure, and to see the car sitting out front, I love that. So I just thank y'all so much, and we appreciate y'all a whole bunch.
Same. Thank you all.
All right, so next, Item 3.6. I had a meeting the other day with Ms. Laura Mancinas, our child nutrition director. And she was very excited about a lot of things going on, and she was telling me about them. And I said, I want you to come tell the board about that. And she's like, no, 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 you can tell them. And I said, well, you don't have to do it in April, you can do it in May. She goes, well, if you're gonna make me do it, I wanna go ahead and do it and get it over with. But she's doing great things at our schools, and we're just so thankful to have her here. So she's gonna do, just tell you about a few things real quick. Ms. Mancinas, come on up.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, for having me here today. And I love being here to share with you everything that we're doing with our, for our students in our school nutrition department. And I would like to, just like I said, share with you a little bit what we're doing on the month of May for them. Our schools will be sourcing locally grown produce and proteins from our North Carolina farmers to celebrate our second Farm to School Week. So the Farm to School Week will take place during the week of May 8 through the 12. This week is being organized by our child nutrition department in collaboration with Pampico Farm Bureau, Pampico County High School Future Farmers of America, and the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. Each school will get the, to experience and participate in educational activities related to agriculture. The students will also have the opportunity to eat locally grown lunches in their cafeterias for that week. We have activities involving farm equipment and booths to teach students a little bit more about where their food comes from and the importance of supporting their, our local farmers. The activities for that week are gonna be, on Monday, May 8, for our middle school, students from the high school FFA will speak to the middle school students about a piece of farm equipment and explain how it is used on a farm. Each classroom will be shown videos about North Carolina agriculture, and the students will be given favorite bags. The bags will have erasers, bracelets that, you know, teach them a little bit about the farmers. On Tuesday, May 9, we will have a farm expo day at our primary school. Booth will be set up to showcase local products like sweet potatoes, strawberries, soybeans, corn, beef, rice, and small grains. After the students visit each booth, they will learn about a piece of farm equipment that will be set up outside of the primary school. Also, a truck from the NC Department of Agriculture will be set up outside for the students to be able to see it. A special lunch will be offered to participating farmers and other invited guests at the primary school media center. We will have the special honor of having our students from the Pampico County High School culinary class assisting with the lunch, and you will receive the invitation later on, so we hope to see you guys there. On Friday, May 12, at our Fred Anderson Elementary School, each class will be participating in a door decorating competition. Each door will be decorated to showcase what agriculture looks like in Pampico County. Pampico High School FFA officers will be the judges. And throughout the day, each class will be rotating outside to learn about a piece of farm equipment also. Right after lunch, every class will attend an ice cream party to celebrate their efforts in the competition. The winners will be announced and receive a trophy. And I would like to thank, she's not here anymore. Ms. Kim Potter is gonna be in charge of bringing the equipment to each of the schools. So I would like to thank her for that.
Are you driving?
Are you driving, Traggers?
No, it's just a busy towel. We're working on it.
We appreciate your help on that. And that's it. So we're excited for our students. I tell you, they're gonna enjoy that week, for sure.
So Farm to School Week, you guys have to make a point, and we'll remind you at the next board meeting, which will still be before that, but that's exciting. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Alrighty, next, kind of falling in line with what we've done for the last three or four months, we are going to have our guidance counselors, our three guidance counselors that we currently have to come and do an update on social-emotional learning. And Mr. Rice was going to introduce them, but he left to go to the same meeting that our board member went to. So with that, I'm gonna introduce Betsy McCandless from the high school, Jeanette Hales-Williams from primary school, and Ms. Erin Blalock, our new counselor from the middle school. So I will turn it over to you guys. Thank you so much for coming.
I just wanna thank y'all for allowing us to come and speak with you guys. A couple of weeks ago, we were able to speak to retired school personnel of Pampico County. And Mr. Rice said, hey, that looks like something Lisa would want to have it for me. I was like, oh, man, that's three in a row, and they might get tired of seeing me. But it's always nice to have a chance to advocate for what we do as school counselors, to advocate for, you know, our team, which is an awesome team, and I'm so thankful for it, and most of all, to advocate for our students of Pampico County Schools. So before we do that, though, you know, we go through a counselor education program. So we're all counselors, but we're also educators at heart. So I don't wanna make any assumptions. We hear a lot about SEL, or social-emotional learning, but we shouldn't assume that everyone knows what that is. So I'm gonna take you through a quick little activity first, okay? So you don't even have to look at the screen just yet. You're gonna hear something, and I want you to just, what does this sound bring to your mind? What do you feel? How do you feel? Calm, happy, peaceful for some? Okay. Wait, I heard something else. Anxious? Okay, interesting. Same sound, different feeling. Okay. I think that's a great point. Thank you. When we play this for students, they have no idea what it is. You hear that automatic "ugh" from several of us, right? Right? Showed you the video. This one drives me crazy. And, you know, if I'm in a meeting and someone's doing that, I'm probably gonna give them the "ah." Kim Potter did not do that on purpose. I'm all chance, we're looking at you. But that one does just absolutely drive me bonkers. I'm gonna click. What about this one? And give you the visual mountain too, so you can see that. Because sometimes the visual brings even more. Do you feel peace with this one?
The others sound like static.
I thought so, too. Until the bird.
It's static, I just have this one wrong, it's not.
Okay, okay, okay. So we all, we all relate to these sounds in different ways. Some of these sounds, you feel peace, others, a little stressed. You know, I've got a young child, but if I had a newborn, the sound of that baby crying would, I'd immediately be on guard, ready to go take care and provide for my child, whatever she needs. So happiness has a look. What does it look like? Does it look the same for you as it does for me? Probably not. There's probably patterns, though, for many of us. If peace has a look, what does it look like? For some of us, it would be the beach. For some of us, it would be the mountains. For some of us, it would be Thursday afternoon at 3 o'clock when spring break begins. And if stress has a look, what does it look like? So we've got all of these little bodies, some of them little, some of them two feet taller than me, but, and they all feel this too, and they have their own stories. So when you think about SEL, you can think about all those stories and all those reactions, and then all those things that they're, they're feeling and they're hearing and they're seeing in the course of a day, and all the things they're seeing and hearing and feeling when they go home, too. Or for some of them, when they go to whatever couch they're sleeping on at night. So Castle is the big, I mean, they are the group that has really been a pioneer in social and emotional learning. So according to them, and this is straight from their website, SEL is not a thing, it's a process. It's a process through which all of us get the knowledge, the skills, and the attitudes. Because the goal is, we're gonna develop these things, and then we're going through those, develop healthy identity. I'm gonna know who I am. I'm gonna know my strengths, I'm gonna know my areas I can improve. But I'm also going to be able to manage my emotions. I'm going to be able to have goals, both for me, both for my team at work, my family. And we're gonna have these goals, and we're gonna work towards them. To feel and show empathy for others, I think we can all agree that our society needs some more empathy. To establish and maintain supportive relationships, and to make responsible and caring decisions. In society, right now, we hear SEL, and some people are saying SEL is just this indoctrination. We're trying to indoctrinate our students. But would, would you say it would be bad to indoctrinate our students with learning how to set goals? Would you say it's bad then to indoctrinate our students so they, I'm trying to think of another, another example of it. So they're self-aware, and they can control their emotions? Or they're resilient, and when they get knocked down, they get back up, and they find another way, a better way, and they succeed? So it's not about indoctrination. It's really about giving our kids the, the skills that they need without an assumption that they're getting it at home. It's very easy for us at high school to be like, oh, they should have gotten this back in the middle school. For the middle school to say, oh, they should have gotten this back at Fred A. And the primary, they say the primary school, the primary says they should be getting this at home. We can't make that assumption anymore either. So we, as educators, we have to do this for them. SEL really is what every employer sees of quality employee. So that, that's what SEL is and this is what we're trying to do. So there are SEL competencies, and there are academic competencies. And we know all about the academic stuff. We know about those things, the standards we're expected to teach, the standards we're expected for our students to master. But we want to also make sure we're embedding these SEL components throughout everything we do so they master both. Because if we can reach the heart and the head and plug them in, we've got a whole student, a whole person, and a whole productive citizen in whatever path they end up choosing. So the whole child, educating the whole child builds a better adult. So.
Good evening. So this just kind of shows you like a visual of what Ms. McCandless was just speaking on. When I look at this, I think of like a pond, and I think of social-emotional learning, like if you throw like a pebble into the pond, and it just has that ripple effect. And you can see all of the different areas that SEL touches. And again, that really goes for every age, all the way from little pre-K, you know, all the way from pre-K, two-years-old, all the way through to adulthood. So it's just most of those things and the different areas that it touches, not only the classroom setting, our schools, our homes, and communities. So that social and emotional learning piece, it really touches everybody in some way, whether it's in any of those areas. So that's, I really like this model. It really just kind of gives you that whole picture of what, you know, kind of what we're envisioning in our students. And again, this is kind of the slide on this side where it says emotional intelligence in action. So this is kind of putting forth all of those things that we're teaching our students, that we're embedding in them, not only academically, but just focusing on the whole well-being of the child. You know, building relationships is, you know, part of that foundation piece. Focusing on our students, their health, their safety, their self-advocacy, advocating for themselves, personal achievements, setting goals in whatever direction they're looking at, whether it's college, going into careers, military, whatever stem that they're, you know, leaning towards to, to build them into that adult, you know, from the goals that they, you know, learn in those social and emotional pieces of our, of our schools. So why SEL? So ACEs is something, is that visual on this side, is the adverse childhood experiences. Again, you know, trauma is not comparative. You know, a lot of times, we may hear a story from one of our students. It may not seem this big, but it is very big to them, whether it's, you know, maybe they lost a pet. That's a big deal. That is, that is their grieving time that they're going through. So that is a moment that, you know, we can kind of help them navigate those emotions because that, that can be really difficult at the young age. So SEL, again, kind of wraps around our students, and we help them build those skills and empower them and support them as counselors throughout their education.
Okay, so SEL, and how is it implemented, and what does it look like in the elementary classrooms? It looks a little different from, from school to school. We have the PASS assessment, and that's something that we started this year. That is an SEL screener. We are doing that two times for our students this year. We did one in the fall. We're gonna administer it again mid-April. We're going to administer it again mid-April to see how the kids are doing in comparison. From those, I'm going to skip just a little bit, the results of that. It was really interesting. We ended up doing much better on it than I thought we were going to do, you know, post-COVID. Our kids, really, in Pamlico County are pretty well-adjusted. We were green. In fact, the lady who is the representative from the past visitation, she said that she's never seen a school-wide, or sorry, county-wide that is this green. So we were doing really well, to be for the most part. ASMR videos, those are kind of sensory videos that you see. Oftentimes, we'll do those in the afternoon to kind of decompress and help them deregulate so they can get onto the bus and stuff. School-wide morning meetings or calendar meetings. We have second-step curriculum, which is available. We use that at the primary school for Tier 2, Tier 3 interventions, and then small group sessions. From the past, what was really nice about the PASS assessment this year is, it broke it, for the primary school particularly, it broke it down so that we have all of these subgroups that I'm able to pull and use curriculum for small groups. So everything evenly fit in there. So that was nice. SEL implemented, and what does it look like secondary? They have two days of PD for two years. I'm sorry, they have two years of PD. They have acute care for students in crisis. We have a partnership with our social workers. PASS again. And enlisted, enrolled, and employed focus. So college admissions, scholarships, and career planning, and academic advising. With this, I don't want to read all of this to you guys, because I know you guys can read, but just really to point out that it's not uncommon for us to be, even at the primary level, to be in crisis management. And all of these things are causing a great deal of anxiety and stress for our kids, and these are the effects that we're seeing in the classroom and during school. And then again, trauma is not comparative. We automatically assume, or years ago, we assumed that these kids were going to come to school, and they were going to have this skill set. They do not necessarily have it. So it's very important for us to be mindful and to be very purposeful in when we are teaching and when we're doing the lessons for it, to instruct the areas of deficit that we need, so that we do develop the whole child. Do you guys have any questions?
I have one. So just so I understand it, all students go through the program?
Everybody receives SEL in some way. It looks different at all schools. But then when I was talking about the Tier 2 and Tier 3, that's more focused on more specific skills. If that makes any sense.
But it does look different from side to side. She's got...
Betsy, Betsy, microphone.
They have morning meetings that they're doing. She's getting into classrooms, at least monthly, and doing some of these very focused. Whereas at high school, what we've done is, we've really tried to... We spent two years doing PD on various things. With our last PD, we spent time going with our past results. These are the areas that our kids need help. They do not feel that they do not have a high self-regard as a learner. So what can we do in our classrooms to build that? Well, so very targeted and just very purposeful and intentional ways that you can in your classroom create a safe place to fail. Not a place where you can fail and get away with it, but a place where you can fail, get up, learn, and that is in itself teaching resilience. So we've worked with that at the high school more so than while we've also got other groups that we've targeted for small group intervention or one-on-one between myself and the social worker.
Something really interesting too, at Fred A, I'm filling in there in the afternoons, and they have progressed. I have a group of girls at Fred A that have actually, they sought me out to start doing a friendship group, and it touched my heart so much, because when they were talking to me and wanting to know who could be in it, they had chosen some girls that weren't adapted in the classroom to include in that. And I was like, I'm doing something right. So...
Well, thank y'all so much. I don't know if anyone else has comments, but I, for one, am so thankful to have one of you at every school now. It's a long time coming. And having been, you know, a principal in a school that didn't have a counselor at, you know, at one point in my career, we are very thankful for you. And these ladies do so much more than scheduling or, you know, group count. They are, just like I said about the SROs, I see these ladies doing the same thing, helping in so many different situations. And, I mean, I don't think you have to watch much of the news or anything to see how important it is for this piece for our students. So we are very thankful to have y'all here. I appreciate what you do. All right, thank you. All right, and with that, we are going to have principal time. And one of our principals is, they're having Title I Talent Show. Like I said, it's a busy time right now. So that's where a lot of the cabinet are tonight, as well as the middle school principals. So we're going to miss her tonight, but we'll start with the high school. And Ms. Holton, you can come on up and give us your updates. Into the microphone, please.
You all may not invite me back after this, but we have a lot to share, so I apologize ahead of time. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Jackson, staff, families, and community members. I would like to take a quick moment to share my appreciation for our APs and our media coordinator, as this week is Assistant Principals Appreciation Week, and tomorrow is Media Coordinator Appreciation Day. They are invaluable members of our Kane's family, and they work nonstop to do what's best for kids. We've been nonstop the last few months at Pamlico County High School, so I'm excited to highlight a few of the many outstanding happenings within hurricane country since January. We successfully completed fall EOCs and state CTE exams in early January. Our juniors worked extremely hard at our ACT boot camp to prepare and perform on the ACT, and we've tested all eligible students for the ACT work keys. We've held two very successful student awards ceremonies, and are currently in the process of preparing for our third quarter and first semester student recognition ceremony scheduled for Thursday and Friday, April 27th and 28th. We've begun the work of creating a new vision and mission statement, and are excited to continue our work towards full alignment with the district for the 23-24 school year. We are super excited to welcome our new Kane's family members for the 2023-2024 school year. And thanks to Ms. McCandless, and Mr. Kerwin, and our elected teachers for our successful eighth-grade open house curriculum night. And thanks to Mr. Rice-Niger and Mrs. Minor for stepping up to assist with the eighth-grade tour last week. I think our eighth-grade students really enjoyed that, and the parents that came out enjoyed seeing what we had to offer with our elective courses. Our NJRTC just returned from a wonderful and educational trip to DC. Commander and Master Chief asked that I say thank you again for approving their trip. And the 2023 Navy Ball was a beautiful event. And their annual awards promotion and change of command ceremony is this Wednesday evening, beginning at 6:00 PM. All of you are invited to come. Our choral students performed beautifully for their winter concert, and are working hard to prepare for their spring concert, scheduled for Thursday, May 11th at 7:00. Our band students received a superior rating, that's the highest rating you can receive, at the World Strides Festival of Gold in Nashville, and are rehearsing daily for their spring concert, scheduled for Thursday, May 18th at 7:00. And our theater students are memorizing lines and they're blocking in preparation for their spring production of Remember the Name, which is a play written by a Pamlico County High School graduate, and it's being co-directed by one of our junior students, Candace Hardison. Curtain goes up at 7:00 on Thursday and Friday, May 25th and 26th. Our second annual cross-curricular evening with the arts, Latin-style, was extremely successful and well-attended. Our cultural arts, culinary arts, English language arts, and world language students did a beautiful job, and it was nice to see some of you there. Our PTSO continues to grow and support our entire Kane's family. The Winter Valentine's Dance they hosted in February was a hit. Over 100 students attended. They are covering the cost of our DJ for our junior senior prom, and have actively been planning some amazing things for our educators during Teacher Appreciation Week. And our April meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April 18th at 4:30 in our media center. Winter sports ended on a successful note, with our men's basketball team making it to the third round of state playoffs, and four of our wrestlers qualifying for and placing at states. Marcus Tyson and Tyler Stevens placed second in their weight class, and Ryan Baker and Elijah Decouyin both placed fourth in the state. Spring sports are now in full swing, and each of our teams, baseball, golf, softball, and track, are performing quite well. We have a home softball game tomorrow night, beginning at 5:00, against Princeton. And finally, in the athletic realm, our powerlifting club just competed this past weekend in the Battle of the Border Competition in Currituck. So we still have a lot of upcoming events as we close out the 22-23 school year. The annual spring plant sale, a career fair, a spring beautification day, prom, FFA Ag Day, our scholarship award ceremony, Senior Day, spring semester test, state testing, senior breakfast, and the culmination of it all, our commencement ceremony for the class of 2023. All events are listed on our Pamlico County High School website calendar, but I will be sure to continue sending reminder emails for your calendars. And as always, we look forward to seeing each of you anytime you'd like to stop by, and appreciate your continued support.
All right, thank you, Ms. Holton. Ms. Alexander from Fred Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have as much as Ms. Holton, but I do have a lot for a little elementary school. So I'll start back in February. We had our spring Title I night, which was a reading night. We did something a little different this year. We did escape rooms that were reading-themed, and our fourth and fifth graders loved it. We had a great turnout. We were able to share information about Title I to our families, and it was just a really great night. We had a door decorating contest, also to celebrate Black History Month in February. A few of the board members, which in that last month, they came out and judged our doors. And the winners of the contest was Mrs. Wong's class. They had a Ruby Bridges-themed door that involved some student writing. They were, they had their award last two weeks ago, and it was really special. We had volunteers from the New Bern Historical Society come and do a little acting performance, and they did a really awesome performance. The performance was based on the first black model for Pepsi, Livonia Frazier, who was from New Bern. So a bit of a local superstar, and they did a great job with their performance, and the kids really loved it. The month of March, we had a surprisingly amount of opportunities related to the arts for our students. So March was very artsy for Fred Anderson. Just last week, the Pamlico County Arts Council brought an opportunity to our students, as well as Pamlico County Middle School. We had Grammy Award-winning Agent Skado, who is amazing, and his crew, Skado and his crew. They came and did a performance for our schools. But not only did they do a performance, they have an online masterclass in rhyme writing or rapping. And our students participated in the masterclass during their music time with our music teacher, Mr. Rainer, and Mr. Mitch Metter at the middle school. And the students who really enjoyed that and dove into it, they were chosen to participate in a private one-on-one, or not a one-on-one, small group session with them prior to the performance. It was just amazing. They had the time of their lives. They did not sit in the seats of the auditorium. They were dancing, singing, onstage. It was awesome. So we're really grateful for the Pamlico County Arts Council for bringing something so engaging and relevant, not only to our students, but to our curriculum, to us. We also had dancers from the Carolina Ballet come and visit our students in the month of March. That opportunity was brought to us by the Atlantic Dance Theater, and we would also like to thank them as well for bringing our students this experience. They learned about the life of professional dancers in ballet, and it was just a neat opportunity for our students to get to ask questions and hear from people in a profession that they may not be exposed to here in Pamlico County. So that was really awesome for our kids. We also had a visual artist featured at the cross-curricular event that Ms. Holton just spoke on in March. And we have some really amazing artists in fourth and fifth grade at Anderson, so it was nice to see their work on display as well. At the end of last week, we held our quarterly celebration for positive behavior. So we really like to celebrate the kids at the end of each quarter who have done a great job showing our shined expectations at school. And we did minute-to-minute games, and we had a really good time at that as well. Currently, we're in the throes of North Carolina check-in testing. We are really anxious to get all of that data back so that we can make a game plan for this last quarter, and really get down to business with reviewing our standards before end-of-grade testing coming up really quickly at the end of the year, which is really important at our school. We also, I can't not speak tonight about the addition of Deputy Thomas at our school, and just how amazing that has been for us this last month. He has fit right in, helped out wherever needed, and it's just, it gives everyone such a sense of peace, knowing that he's there on campus. So we're just really grateful that we have him with our staff now. Upcoming events, we have our Spring Clean PTO Dance Thursday after school to ring in spring break. We have our Field Day at Camp Seafair pending approval after this. Our Girls on the Run 5K will take place on Saturday morning at 10:00 AM on April 22nd. So if you want to stop by, that's always a really fun event. And then we also have a STEM Night on May 3rd at 5:30. Thank you, guys, and please come back anytime. We love to have board members that are building to share all the amazing things we're doing at Fred Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Cartamore from the primary school.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Want to start off with sharing our theme for this speech is collaboration. I'm sure you hear that all through, what I have to share. First, I would like to say that, wait a minute. I'm so sorry. We would like to welcome a few new members to our staff. First, Officer Gage is our new SRO. In a few short days in a week, he has made lots of new, I want to say, high friends. He is already making a positive influence in our classroom, playgrounds, and in our campuses. Some of the responsibilities of Officer Gage includes monitoring our traffic inside the building, monitoring arrivals and departures, making sure all exits and entrances are secure. And later, we look forward to him sharing his experiences about safety and good choices with our students. We also welcome Mr. Fabian, Jam Fabian, Fabian to the district. Mr. Fabian is our new behavioral specialist. And boy, did he hit the ground running. Some of the things that he's done so far is observe the student behaviors, meeting with staff to design behavior interventions, and also helping them to implement these interventions. He's offering support to staff, working with them throughout the day, and he is interacting positively with our students. He has become quickly a treasured member of our staff. Some of the other events that's happened so far or throughout the course of the month is we've met with the North Carolina DOT to address some concerns about carpooling. I think we have maybe found a solution, and that will eliminate some of the traffic jams. We continue to celebrate our students of the month with positive reinforcement. Our PTO and our MTSS PBIS goal team have met and planned our next PBIS celebration. Our goal is to encourage positive behavior through positive reinforcement. We continue to celebrate our staff and students of the month. Our grade-level teams are working together to provide the best instruction for all students while lending a hand where it needs to be. I am so proud of them. I'm, Miss Katie Hardison is here, reminding me that I literally teared up today during their planning, just watching them collaborate and talk with one another, how they can help our students, just touched my heart in a way that I really didn't expect this morning. So anyways, lastly but not least, believe it or not, in the theme of collaboration, we have welcomed two new babies to our family. Both baby girls were born or delivered on the same day. Both moms and babies are doing just fine. Thank you, guys, for listening.
Let's give all those principals a round of applause. DIY can't help but, to stay in the schools, it's just so, as much as I can, it's just very positive. I have to say, as far as the SRO, the day that he started, I happened to be there. There was a little situation with a student that I know very well. And so I was asking him about his time with the SRO, and he goes, oh, he's my best friend now. That's why we were hanging out. He's my best friend. Like, oh, you made a best friend already. So just so you know. Thank you, principals, that was great. Now on miscellaneous, I would just like to say one thing that I didn't have down. I had the opportunity, along with Elizabeth Harwick, to attend the Appalachian State University Recruiting Fair, Teaching Job Fair on Friday. And it's been a while since I've attended one of those fairs. And it was a long ways to go in Boone, but it was very refreshing, I have to say, that how professional all the candidates were that came up to us. Now, I have to say, the folks on the western side of the state probably had a longer line than what we did, but the ones that we talked to sought us out. They had heard about Pamlico County Schools, and they were very excited. I was texting principal, I think I've got a teacher for you. Tell her she's hired. I'm like, well, let's interview her, do a background check, and all that. So it was just very refreshing to see. Because over the last couple of years, and I don't know if it was COVID or what it was, but it just seems like I've heard that, you know, it was just different. But very, very excited about some of the potential candidates. There's not a lot of them, we know that. But it was just, it was really good, and saw a lot of, saw some former students from Pamlico County that were there now, working for districts, and were actually doing some recruiting. So that was great. And thank you, Elizabeth. I think she kind of enjoyed that too. But it was fun. So with that, I'm going to end with if any board members would like to talk about anything that you've been able to do since the last board meeting, and then that's where I'll end.
I want to say, I think the staff that was there.
Microphone, Ms. Allen.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought I spoke loud enough.
Not for the folks watching at home.
Last Friday was, now I guess what, I can't even think of it. For child abuse awareness prevention, and I saw several of our staff members out there, and I was just really excited to see you guys out there participating. So thank you for being there for such a special occasion. I might, you may not have seen me because I was working so hard, but I saw you. So thank you.
I attended the evening with the arts at the high school, and it was so wonderful. I really enjoyed it. The chorus performed, and there were art exhibits, and it was from all of the different schools. They were great. They were great. I really loved the ceramic pottery pieces. They were really, I told Ms. Holly Bradley, I wanted to buy one of them. They were beautiful. The, the students reading the poetry, I really enjoyed that. That was nice. And, and then the band performed, a little band concert. So it was great. Thank you for inviting us to that.
Very good. Anybody else?
Everybody's talking about, well, the ones that have attended, so I have not missed a softball game yet. I don't know why. But we do have a home game tomorrow night, and we, we've got a lot of talented young ladies on that field. They, they'll rival a lot of girls who are playing college softball right now, so all our sports are doing real good. Yep.
Well, if that's everything, then that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. And thank you to all our principals. Y'all were staying busy. So we've got several, eight items on our consent agenda. Everybody's had a chance to look through those. You've got the handouts at your chair. If we need to remove any of these and vote on them individually, we can. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Moving on to agenda item six, our finance. Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Item 6.1 is a lottery update from the lottery funds. Seems like every month I'm giving you a lottery update. It's become one of my favorite topics. I mentioned last month about several different lottery fund pots of money. Of course, the, the big one is the $50 million grant that we received to build the new 612 school. And another pot is a repairs and renovations lottery grant money that I mentioned to you last month that I got some specifics on exactly what we could spend that on. So what I'd like to give you is another, is a printout of these pots of money, and just want to talk about a couple of projects that we need to get.
Sorry.
Okay, two things I want to talk about. You see the Needs-Based Lottery Fund, that's the $50 million grant. And I mentioned last month that we already received our, our first draw. We don't have that money in the bank, but we do have it earmarked for Pamlico County Schools for the 612 school, a little bit over $28 million. So just to remind you, the way that money flows is it flows through the county. The county is the, is the fiscal agent, and then we take invoices and turn them into the county, and then they pay us. And then we obviously pay the contractor, whoever the money is, is due. There's, there's a distribution request that I would like to complete, and that document, and I don't have that before you tonight because there are separate documents that I've, this is a new one that I haven't completed before, so I want to make sure I do it right. So I'm in conversation with DPI, but when, when that form is filled out, Mr. Prescott will sign as the chairman of the Board of Education. Then it will go over to the county and be signed by the chair of the county commissioners, and then it is submitted to DPI in Raleigh, and then those funds will come to the county, and then they'll come over here to us. The first distribution request, I'm going to ask for $150,000, and that is for schematic designs that the architect has been working on, a survey of that property where the new school is going to go, which has already been completed. And then the subsurface evaluation, which actually was done today, where they bored holes into Sheriff Davis's baseball field, and I had to promise him that it was going to look just the way it did when they finished, the way it started. So I'm kind of glad he's out of town right, right now, but I'm sure when he gets back, he'll probably drive by there and check it out. But there were 15 bores done, anywhere from 20 to 50 feet deep, to test the soil, the, I guess, the density, sound. I mean, it was just, it was kind of crazy, everything it was doing. But that hopefully was completed today, and then we'll go from there. The schematic design, actually Robbie Ferris with SFLNA, we've probably been working with him for over a year now, to be honest with you. I mean, it's been a long process. We actually started before COVID, and then we just kind of put, put brakes on everything. But he hasn't invoiced us yet, which I was pretty tickled about, that we haven't received an invoice from him. But we did get one today, so we need to go ahead and get this process rolling so we can get some money to pay him. This does take a little time to go through the channels to get the money back to us, but that $150,000 will pay his first invoice, pay for the survey, and the subsurface evaluations. So that's one request. And then the second one is from the Repair and Renovations Lottery Fund. The $70,000 that we'll be asking for is for a new voice-over IP phone system, and I can't even stress to you how bad we need this. Our phone system, which is for all schools and departments, is so antiquated and outdated. I think that was one of the first things that I did when I came to work here, is we got a new phone system, and that was over 20 years ago. So this, this old phone system is just terrible. I wish Ms. Lancha was here. She could really talk about it.
It's really bad at the middle school.
They seem to be having more problems than anybody. But thanks for, to Wendy White and Mr. Stephen, they are getting quotes for it. We're still waiting on one more piece of the quote in order to take care of that. And that, I'm guestimating around $70,000, so it's, it's, I can't tell you how excited I am to, to have this money, because otherwise, that would have been in the capital outlay budget. And so that had increased our proposed budget 70 more thousand dollars. So we're thrilled to have this money available to us to spend. And then once we get the approval, they can go, once they get the, the quotes and everything, then they can roll with it and start that process. Obviously, I'm sure it's a lengthy process converting everything over, but it will be so nice when it's, when everything is done. So if the board will approve these tonight, then I will get the documents completed, get them to Mr. Prescott to sign, and then take them across the street for the county commissioners to sign. Any questions about those?
Steve, is this, is the new phone system, it's over the internet, correct? Is it an internet? Is this going to save us, like, are we saving money from a phone bill that we're paying now?
That is the plan. We, and that's the one thing they're waiting on right now, is that final portion of the quote, is how much of the monthly service fee it'll be. And so we, we anticipate that that will hopefully be less. But I'll be honest with you, even if it's a little bit more, we, we need it. I mean, it's just, it's, it's pretty bad.
I can't even use my office phone.
See it less than what we're paying now. I mean, the, the system is so antiquated that centrally, I mean, they don't have parts. They can't, they won't even come work on it. So we're kind of at the mercy right now, so we need to move forward with this if at all possible. And I don't know either about voice over IP, but those two, two people right there do. So if you have any questions at all, you can, you can ask them about that. We actually started this before COVID, too. Talking about it, and just had to put the brakes on that also. So just time to bring this back up and hopefully get it taken care of.
Any other questions on this? If, I definitely agree this is long overdue for the, the phone system. So if it's a pleasure of the board, I will entertain a motion to approve, approve the distribution request for the lottery funds as presented.
Motion. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Item 6.2, I think you have a budget amendment to fund date in front of you. If we'll take a look at that. Fund date is, that's the, that's the pot of money that is now, the legislation is that we need, we'll have to start sharing this with charter schools. So we, this is the other restricted fund, fund date, that we want to keep separate and not have to share. You see increases in certain items there on the revenue at the top. You see sales tax refund, increase of $3,766.72. Medicaid administrative claims, an increase of $30,317.80. Perry Griffin Foundation grants, $195,200. The Bosch Grant, $22,307. And fund balance appropriation for the athletic facilities grant, $77,31. And that last item is, we received that money last year. We didn't spend it all. So as of June 30th, it automatically rolls into the fund balance, so we have to turn around and reappropriate it again. Okay? Some of these items were not even originally budgeted in the original, original budget. Like the Perry Griffin Foundation, that comes in year-round, and so we turn around and have to, have to budget those. On the expenditure side, under the Regular Instructional Services, $197,507. Co-curricular Services, $97,031. And the Support for Alternative and Program Services, $34,084.52. So total increase in the fund date budget of $328,622.52 for a total budget of $830,212.52. Have any questions about any of those items?
Here and none, I ask for a motion to approve the budget amendment to fund date as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to 7.1. Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Dixon actually had a presentation in her grad school class tonight, so I'm going to do this by myself. So there's been a lot of back and forth and questions about the calendar. Ms. McCandless and Ms. Holton are here from the high school. Of course, you know, we have the other principals are here as well. But it is my recommendation that we approve the 23-24 calendar that you have in front of you, which does have the semester ending prior to Christmas, like we've discussed. I know Ms. Holton sent you an email, giving you kind of the results of some of the information that some of you asked for. So if you have any other questions, we are happy to answer them, but we are ready to move forward on this calendar if we can.
Any, any questions on this? I think y'all have done a great job.
Thank you.
In, in answering the questions that were before and putting this calendar together, and have reached out to a lot of folks, and I'll be honest, I'm very comfortable with this calendar as presented.
I feel good, I feel good about it, too. I really do.
If there are no questions, then it's the, the board chooses to move forward, I'll ask for a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Motion. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Okay, moving on to 7.2, our dual enrollment policy. There you are. I was looking for you, I'm like, where'd he go?
He was already ready.
Good evening, board members. Tonight for item 7.2, we have the adoption of policy 3101, dual enrollment. This is the second read, so hoping that you will move to adopt this particular policy tonight.
So again, this is second reading. There's no further questions or comments. I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you.
The next item, 7.3, the board asks for a policy to formally appoint to go through the process of selecting your representative on the Pamlico Community College Board of Trustees. And you have a policy, policy 2675, before you tonight. This is a first read, so please feel free, anything you see in it, to mark it up and get those changes to me. I hope we'll be meeting with the policy review committee in a couple of weeks, so if we need to, we can sit down as a committee to review that. But the majority of the language in this policy did come from, as you see down in the bottom legal reference, General Statute 115D dash 20. Along with that, which would not be a part of the policy, this is actually the application that would be completed and submitted to the office before you want to go through the process of selecting your trustee representative. Again, these are, this is in draft form, so if there are changes or additional information that you might have on the candidates, please get that to me and add that to the application.
All right, again, this is first reading. Everybody's got a copy of the handout 7.3, the policy, and everybody just got a copy of the application. So review these. If you've got questions or comments, please reach out, either to myself, Ms. Jackson, or Dr. Patrick. And again, this is first reading, so we'll bring it up at our next board meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Dudley.
Okay. I move that the Pamlico County Board of Education entered to closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in NC General Statute 143-318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G and GS 115C-402. Confidential personnel matters as provided in NCGS 143-318.11A1 5 and 6 and 115C-319, and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Do you have a motion? I need a second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we'll be going into closed session at 7:25.
Well, I guess, I was supposed to ask for a motion to end closed session and resume open session.
Motion.
So, I got a motion?
Yes, motion.
Second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we're back in open session. Seven point five, I need a motion to approve the personnel report for action as presented in closed session.
Motion.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor, raise your right hands. Looking at our meeting dates, so the April twenty-four special called Budget Work Session, we will not be having that meeting, but Ms. Jackson or Tiffany would get in contact with us as a possible meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Yes.
For the new building update for the board. So, be looking for that. You got the dates for our May and June meeting. So, at this time, I'm gonna let Mr. McCotter give us a...
Okay, on the calendar and the agenda, our board retreat is still on for the twenty-third through the twenty...
No, no, it is not. No, no, it is not. Eric, we had, Eric has been, I don't know if you saw his email, but he's... Coast Guard has summoned his duty for a little while during those dates, so we're going, we're looking at moving that to late summer, early fall, and Rachel's gonna provide some dates for us.
Okay, okay. Very good.
All right.
Simplifies a lot of things.
Yeah, okay. So, I can, I can let Mr. McCotter give us an update on the commissioners meeting now? Okay?
All right.
Talking through the mic.
Talking through the mic. The commissioners meeting tonight that Henry and I attended. David Simpson, Simpson?
Daniel, Daniel Simpson.
Daniel Simpson.
Daniel Simpson, I'm sorry, yeah, Daniel. Yeah, I knew his name when I was there. Anyway, he gave a nice talk on tomatoes, so, and he probably talked for fifteen minutes along with the four H representative, after which Doug Piersol got up, he was on the agenda, and he spoke and in opposition to the legislation making Pamlico County Board of Education a partisan board, and apparently that legis- legislation has now been expanded to include something like thirty additional counties. So, we are not the only one faced with Bill, Senate Bill two eighty-seven, which Norman Sanderson introduced, but that bill has been expanded. Anyway, Doug gave a very fiery presentation, and after that, they opened it up to the general presentation from the community, and fifteen people had signed up. Each person getting three minutes to talk. There were over, Henry said, he thought there were a hundred people there, I think there were more than a hundred people. A total of fifteen people spoke in opposition to legislation making Pamlico County Board of Ed partisan. Two of them were from Craven County, and one of the people from Craven County noted that the, because of the partisan, of their board becoming partisan and the, some of the infighting that has been going on, they've been losing teachers, which this person said, Craven County has been losing teachers, and Pamlico County has been benefiting and hiring teachers from Craven County because of this. But anyway, so there was a, they had to, under the commissioners regulations, their guidelines, they can only limit public comment to fifteen minutes, and after fifteen minutes, they voted to extend so that all, all of the people who had signed up could speak. And I spoke in the second tier and told them that I was there. And I spoke in the second tier and told them that I was there as a board member, but I was there also at the request of our board chair, Mr. John Prescott, and that I had been told to speak with authority for the board and request that they put this, I've forgotten what you call it, they put this proposal for having Pamlico County Board of Ed become partisan, they put it on agenda for the next meeting so that Pamlico County Board of Ed would be able to have more input and speak with the commissioners directly. And I also spoke in opposition to the proposal. There were other, a lot of other people who spoke. There was nothing else going on. They, we, we were thinking that they might consider, they could have considered tonight to review or rescind what they had previously done in regards to the, to the proposal, the partisan proposal, but they did not do that. Mr. Riggs, the chairman, had told me before the meeting that they could do that, and he said, he said, oh, we could put it on the agenda, but he said one of the people who had originally voted for it would have to request that that be done. Anyway, we took a five-minute break, and Henry said, I think we ought to stay because they could come back and say that they're going to rescind this or review it or put it on, on hold, and so we waited until the next session. And during that time, I talked with Ann Holton, she was there, she spoke against it. As I said, all 15 people who spoke, spoke against it. And Ann told me, she said that Doug Brentson just came over and told her it ain't going to happen. And Doug is, I'm a little bit lost at words what to say about Doug. He had nice parents.
Yeah.
That's all I'll say.
Yeah. Yeah. Don't say any bad comments, we're still live. I'm messing with you. No, well, thank you for that update.
Well...
And I think that's...
Yeah.
Yeah, it is what it is.
There was a, there was a lot of opposition. A lot of people, the people who spoke, spoke very eloquently, and they also let the commissioners know that this is not it. This is not going to be the end of it.
Right.
And Henry, when we got back in, Henry drove, when we got back in his vehicle, he said, you know, it doesn't make any difference what you think, which side you're on, on this, on this proposal. It's the way they did it. They did it under the table. It's the way they did it, and people don't like that.
Right. Well, if I hear anything, I'll keep the board updated on, on what might transpire out of tonight's meeting, so thank you for going, and we thank Mr. Rice for going. We'll see what happens next. So I think that's gonna be all our discussion tonight. We got our regular dates. As you heard from our principals, we got a lot of things going on in our schools. It's hard to believe we're, it'll be graduation before we know it, so with all that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me, I have a question. I may have missed this earlier. It concerns, I'm concerned about Silicon Valley Bank and what happened there, and the capital building fund. Have we received any of those monies, or is the state holding them in escrow? I'm concerned about our bank account, to make sure that our bank account is solvent.
You mean, from what Mr. Curtis was talking about that he's now applying for from the state?
The lottery fund, funding for the new building?
Or you mean the new building? Because they're, they're different. That, the lottery stuff is gonna come to us, but the other funds go to the county, and then we get them from the county.
Okay, then it's their responsibility to make sure that...
It stays in their bank. Yes.
Whatever institution is solvent.
Yes.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good job, Mr. McCotter. Good job.